Welcome to the May 12, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Like the April 28 meeting, we're operating in a virtual environment. I would like to ask for patience as we use this platform for our public meetings. There may be slight delays as we transition between speakers and participants. If participants have issues with the technology, please send a message to the moderator. For each item, staff will present or will provide a presentation. The applicant will then be invited to speak. As is the case for our in-person meetings, the applicant and those in favor will have a total of 10 minutes to speak on a particular item. Those opposed will have a total of 10 minutes to speak. Each speaker other than the applicant will be allowed two minutes to speak. We ask that speakers not duplicate comments. After all the comments, the applicant will have two additional meetings or two additional minutes to respond to issues or questions raised. Each portion, Planning Commission members can ask questions. I ask that commissioners hold on all questions until the conclusion of each presentation. I also ask each commissioner to be recognized by the chairperson before speaking. I would also appreciate it if you, if we have trouble with cameras and I can't see you, you can post to the chat session and let me know that you want to ask a question. At the beginning of each regular Planning Commission meeting, we allow time for a comment period where anyone can speak for up to three minutes on any topic that does not appear on the agenda. Today, we don't have anyone signed up to speak, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll give pause there for people to take a breath. Okay, so the consent agenda, this is our first order of business for this meeting. It's a list of requests that can be acted upon in one motion instead of acting on each request individually. The commission can approve the items with one motion and vote. Three of the items on the consent agenda appear to satisfy time requirements contained in the UDO. The two text changes received a 30-day time extension from the city council. One text change, TC 1619 regarding accessory dwelling units is in the current text change committee, or sorry, is currently in the text change committee. The action for this text change is to move it from the committee to the Planning Commission to be discussed on May 26. To be clear, the commission is not voting on the final disposition of any of these With that, I would like for a motion, or I would like to ask for a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
Before we do that, could I make a comment about the consent agenda?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to make some public comments in particular about these text changes. You know, despite the long delay that we've had since these text changes were initially presented, the coronavirus and other factors have limited the opportunity for public discussion and input into some of these text changes that are very robust and will, in a large way, fundamentally change a lot of the policies and practices within the building code right now. I have requested an opportunity, I've requested that we delay the, provided an extension longer than 30 days so that we could have additional time to discuss these. I also requested that in lieu of, if we could not have a delay so that we could send this back and work this in the text change committee, that we instead hold a virtual text change committee on May 19. Both of those opportunities, unfortunately, due to various constraints related to the pandemic and the virtual capabilities and other factors, could not be granted. So I just wanted to say that, I know that, I'm concerned that we have not had adequate input from the general public on this. I expect that you are as well. And that a public meeting where folks can only have two minutes to comment would probably not be in adequate form either. So in that case, I just wanted to ask the general public to please review these text changes thoroughly and send us your comments. Preferably no later than next Wednesday, but we'll take them up until the last minute. The reason I say next Wednesday is because we, that will give us some time to work through this and to send our comments to staff and work through those so that we can have an efficient meeting on May 26. And in particular, I want to call on the professionals who are going to be working directly with the code and on some of the technical experts, whether it's architects and attorneys, even developers, you know, other folks that are directly impacted by the code to take a look at this and please, I would encourage you to send you, to send us your comments in writing over email or reach out to us over the phone over the next week so that we can incorporate those into the text change.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. I agree with your comments and I appreciate your taking the time to get them on record and to make that plea. So with that, is someone ready to make a motion?
I actually had another question.
Please do.
So maybe this is for Ken, but I know I'd actually written Travis about this as well. And I fully agree with Blaney, excuse me, Blaney, but, and he said that if we got comments to staff, staff would be able to review them and respond to them. I wasn't sure if responding involved text options or just thoughts and if we'd have that as part of our package in prep for the meeting or if it would just be dispersed at the meeting.
So this is Ken. The nature of the response will depend in part on the question and how each commissioner plans to pose it, but if your desire is to see text options, and yes, staff can prepare those, in terms of whether they'll be available prior to the meeting, that depends on when we get the questions and whether there's enough time to incorporate them into the backup for the next agenda. If there is, then yes. If not, then we would have to bring them to the table for discussion. So I think that should answer your question.
Okay. Is there a date that would be helpful for people to get it in so that it could be part of the package?
I would say, I mean, it'll depend in part on the complexity of the question and how much work is necessary to address it. But we're typically firming up agenda items and backup materials the Wednesday before the Planning Commission for that publication. And I would say at least nine days or more in advance of the date of the Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Thomas Dula, have you sent comments in already?
I sent some, but I'm revising them, so.
I know Commissioner Hicks has also sent comments in and has waited for some response, so we do need our staff to respond to the ones that are going in.
Okay.
I also wanted to add, thank you. I just wanted to support Commissioner Miller's comments and appreciate your comments. And I also, I'll send in some more comments as well. I do think it's important to get feedback from the public, from professionals in the public on this text change. And I think I'd be interested in seeing some text options as well. So I know that there had been some folks that had reached out to the text change committee prior to the coronavirus. And so I'm hopeful that those comments can be included in the feedback that we get from staff as we move forward. Thank you.
Ms. Commissioner Lampton.
I'm wondering, did we have an opportunity to take some of, I think Shelley made some comments about social media. Have we been able to send this out via social media and kind of hit a larger group?
Do we have anybody who can respond from staff about that? Mr. Bowers or Mr. Travis? We are on mute.
The question is, can we hit social media to get a larger response? Yes.
What would that take and when would it happen?
We would use our normal social media channels and it would happen insufficient, it would happen in advance of the, we would probably do it at the time of the publication of the agenda and we might be able to do it in advance as well.
I think to Blaney's comment earlier, I'm wondering if we could have it, you know, sent out early. I mean, essentially, it's been part of this board docs, so it's already been kind of published. I'm wondering if that would allow us the opportunity to still send it out so that, you know, Commissioner Miller's comments for Wednesday would be good.
We will, I will work with our communication staff to publicize, in particular, the items which have been effectively scheduled for the next Planning Commission meeting by virtue of acting on the consent agenda, which would include the two text changes.
Cool.
Anyone else? I'm sorry, I had not gotten my window correct and so I was missing some people. So Commissioner Miller.
Since this is probably going to be a robust conversation on May 26, could we, could I request that we change the agenda to make the text changes one of the first things on the agenda as opposed to moving them to the end?
I'm happy to do that. We also have had some pressure from zoning applicants to get themselves prioritized. So I look to staff to help us with that because I am concerned about not having enough time as we would have had at text change to air out particularly the ADU text change. So I really think we'll probably devote more than an hour to the ADU text change at the rate of comments and concerns that I'm hearing. But I don't know what to do about the additional pressure we're getting from people who are stacked up in the zoning queue that really feel like we have not been serving them well. Of course, I have responded back that it's not our fault. It's the coronavirus. We didn't do this. And we're doing our best to clear the backlog, but we are somewhat constrained by resources and time. So I look to staff to help us out with that and we'll be looking at the May 26 agenda very soon, I'm sure. Any other thoughts before we move on and take a motion? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Can tell nobody wants to do this. Okay. Commissioner Miller.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second? All right. Any further discussion before we move on? All in favor say aye or raise your hand. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the motion passes unanimously. Let's move on. I believe we have old business next. Case number TC 1719. Initiated request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance related to design alternates. And Mr. Holland, I believe you are prepared to speak about this.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is an item that should be familiar with everyone because it's been discussed at a previous meeting and again here, or again at the text change committee. TC 1719 is a text change for design alternates.
To be clear, there's, while we're waiting, this is a city-initiated case and so there Mr. Holland, are you having some issues with getting going?
I am waiting for the PowerPoint to come up. I'm not controlling that, so.
So who's managing the PowerPoint?
The PowerPoint's coming through Bynum. She's working on it right now.
Okay. Is it just this one case that the PowerPoint's, we're having trouble with? Should we move on and come back? Or is this going to be an issue for anything, any case that we pick up? Ah, here we go. She's starting to share content.
Here we go. Great. Again, TC 1719 is, or design alternates, this text change would replace the option for design adjustments from the provisions of UDO Articles 8.4 and 8.5. It would create more objectively applied criteria at the staff level and provide a path for a quasi-judicial hearing for requests that cannot be approved administratively. This is, this ordinance is a follow-up to TC 219 and TC 619. This text change reorganizes Articles 8.4 for new streets and 8.5 for existing streets into new Articles 8.4 for, to address new and existing streets and 8.5 street cross-sections to improve readability and remove duplication, duplication of regulations. The city recently adopted two text changes that I mentioned earlier to address the standards associated with design adjustments. These changes were necessary to remove subjective standards which were part of the administrative review process. TC 219 removed the ability for design, or excuse me, administrative design adjustments and instead required any relief for those to be reviewed and possibly granted by the Board of Adjustment. TC 619 modified the standards for Article 8.3 to be more objective with an appeal path remaining at the Board of Adjustment. The major modifications associated with this text change, the process would be retitled to Design Alternate. The quasi-judicial public hearing would occur at the Planning Commission. It is currently with the Board of Adjustment. The language for streetscape plans would be enhanced. To go through these sections, Section 836 would remove the findings and relocate them to Section 10 to 18. Section 841 describes the regulations for construction and acceptance of streets and streetscapes. It would identify when these standards are required within the downtown area and would also give an option for payment in lieu of installation. It would also provide an allowance for a public access easement for sidewalks on private Section 841D would establish a location priority for street trees on streets controlled by the North Carolina DOT or the, or with the City of Raleigh and street trees that are placed on private property. 8, Section 841 would also expand upon the submittal requirements for streetscape plans. And 851 would give Design Alternate Review of Streetscape, Street Cross-sections to the Planning Commission. Section 854B would establish a one-foot width increase for a two-lane divided avenue. Section 858 would give a dimensional allowance to the streetscape for approved storm wire improvements. Section 1012C would give specific approval authority of design alternates to the Planning Section 10 to 18 would reinstate the specific approval authority for design alternates to Articles 8.3, 8.4, and 8.5 of the UDO plus design alternates to standards within the Raleigh Street Design Manual. Section 10 to 18 would identify the application requirements and would identify the Planning Commission action. 10 to 18 would identify the findings for approval by the Planning Commission of a design alternate from Sections 832, 834, and 835 relating to blocks and access and would also identify the findings for approval by the Planning Commission for design alternates from the, from Articles 8.4 and 8.5 and from the Raleigh Street Design Manual. At the text change committee in, which we met in, which met in February, the staff was, staff advised that the description and the map for Section 4 of the ordinance, which was commonly referred to as the Christmas map, would be revised to more accurately reflect the applicable downtown area as it stands now. Here is the graphic for that, that map. There was also quite a lengthy description that came with this, so that's been, that description's been updated to reflect what you see here on the map. Before taking questions, I would state that the city attorney's office represented here by David York had some additional comments on this text change, so I will turn it over to him to make his comments.
Thank you, Mark. Two items real quickly. In reviewing the language of the description for the Christmas plan area, staff had some concerns about the clarity of the language of what it meant or what applications applied or did not apply if you were located in the Christmas plan. And so there's been suggested language slightly different than what's in the draft that's on board docs. The current draft on board docs, after describing the Christmas plans, basically says, "Property located in the Christmas plan shall not require compliance with right-of-way width, back-of-curb-to-back-of-curb width, utility placement easement or maintenance strip for existing streets." That's the language in the code today. The proposed language is just to clarify what that means. Shall not require dedication of additional right-of-way utility placement easement or maintenance strip or widening of the back-of-curb-to-back-of-curb width for existing streets. There was some concern as to, you know, what compliance meant. And so you all make a recommendation for approval of this. We would ask that you include with your recommendation the proposed revision to the Christmas plan language. And another item is that there's been some discussion among, I guess, the council as well as staff as to what the Appearance Commission would be doing in the future once the administrative alternates, which they're currently looking at, and that's primarily their biggest caseload as I understand, once that goes away from them, what they would be doing. And the concept came up that the Appearance Commission could perform quasi-judicial duties of the Planning Commission. And so there's the possibility, although the current draft in front of you recommends that the Planning Commission be the body to hear these new design alternates. We have language that we can include in the draft, in this TC 17 that would give city council the choice to determine whether it be the Appearance Commission, excuse me, the Planning Commission or the Appearance Commission performing the quasi-judicial duties of the Planning Commission as designated by city council. So if that's something that the Planning Commission would like to endorse, then any action recommending approval should include I'm sorry, my screen went blank and I lost. I couldn't tell whether I was muted or not.
Okay.
The Appearance Commission, the way the administrative alternates work, and I'll let Ken or Travis correct me. Ken Bowers actually has the approval authority on administrative alternates. Under the code, requests are sent to the Appearance Commission for review and recommendation. Under the code, requests are sent to the Appearance Commission for review and recommendation. Then Ken makes a determination. And so they're just holding a general meeting. They'll hear comments from the public, but they're not holding any formal public hearing or any quasi-judicial hearing. They're just looking at the applications, evaluating them over the findings that are called for in the code, and making a recommendation to the Planning Director. Once that shifts, the intent is for those alternates to shift also into design alternates. And so, once that occurs, there will be less work for the Appearance Commission to perform. And so there was a request that staff look into what are some things that the Appearance Commission could do. And we were in the middle of this process with TC 17, but had already been to the Text Change Committee when that request came. And it was in response to that request that staff discussed the possibility of the Appearance Commission being the body to review these design alternates. And so, right now, the design alternates, known as design adjustments, are being reviewed by the Board of Adjustment.
So this will shift from just being a review by the Board of Adjustment to being a decision by the Board of Adjustment?
No, the Board of Adjustment is making the decision with the design adjustments. Okay? The Appearance Commission is making recommendations to the Planning Director on administrative alternates.
I'm sorry, I said the wrong board when I was trying to say what I was saying. So the Appearance Commission would no longer just be providing input, they would be making a decision.
Right. If, if two things, if TC 17 is changed to give the authority to the Planning Commission or the Appearance Commission, you know, performing the quasi-judicial duties of the Planning Commission, then either body could be assigned that review task.
Okay. And since we are overwhelmed with work, and it sounds to me like they are not overwhelmed and looking for something to do, this could potentially solve two problems. Is that part of your thinking?
That was the thought of staff, and so we wanted to get it in front of you today, which has been the first opportunity to discuss this since, to discuss TC 17 since those discussions involving the Appearance Commission occurred.
Okay. So I've asked my questions. Commissioner Miller has a question.
So when we were in the Text Change Committee talking about this, I asked about the process that went into drafting this, this design alternate text change, and it sounded like there had been robust input for a long period of time from members of the public, from the general public and also from the city. So this is a pretty significant change right at the finish line, when a lot of work has gone into this and the form of this was reviewed and signed off on by lots of stakeholders. Could you give us a little more insight on who originally wanted this to be performed by the Planning Commission and who originated the idea to change it now?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, right now, the Board of Adjustment is, along with the Historic Development Commission, are the only quasi-judicial review bodies. And so the stopgap for getting these into the proper quasi-judicial review venue was to send them to the Board of Adjustment. But it was considered a stopgap partly because the Board of Adjustment is very busy with its usual work on variance requests and also because the nature of the findings, the lay board that's holding the hearing, it's advantageous to have folks who have more knowledge of development and design issues than is typical for the board members who are more used to hearing cases based on the legal concept of hardship. So there was always a thought that this text change would eventually move those matters out of the Board of Adjustment to another quasi-judicial review body. The Planning Commission is an obvious choice, given the composition of the membership, the relationship to the types of planning items that they're already used to hearing, and the clear enabling authority. At the time, when this was being discussed, and I will claim some responsibility, it wasn't clear that the Appearance Commission could also function in that capacity. However, based on subsequent analysis, it turns out that they can. You can think of the text changes, what we're working on now, as addressing two processes in the UDO which are going to potentially become more unified. The design adjustment was a creature largely of Chapter 8, dealing with streets and streetscapes and blocks, a little bit more engineering in this orientation, although there still are significant planning issues there. Those were never heard by the Appearance Commission. The administrative adjustments were almost all to things spelled out in Chapter 1 with a few other items, and they were generally design-related items. The Appearance Commission has a long history of reviewing these now based on our observations of how they run their meetings. Even though they are not acting in a quasi-judicial capacity nor making the final decision, they are basing their recommendations heavily on the ordinance language, which usually contains four to five showings that the applicant is supposed to meet in order to justify the alternate means of compliance as provided by the design adjustment. So based on the ongoing legal review as to whether the authority was there, our observations of how the Appearance Commission was performing, and also that the nature of the alternates being very design-based seemed very much within the wheelhouse and expertise of the membership of the board upon further consultation with the Attorney's Office and Planning Staff, it seemed like this was an idea that was worth incorporating to the ordinance as an option for how these get to be heard. I will say that if they are all heard at the Planning Commission, it will represent a fairly significant increase in workload. These are complex cases, and there's a significant number of them. I can't think of a single large building that's been erected anywhere in the city that didn't get at least one administrative adjustment in order to go forward.
So, Mr. York, I'm looking for where in the information we had on Board Docs it was called out that these additional changes were being suggested. So can you point to one of the documents on Board Docs for this case that laid out those two additional thoughts that you?
That's the reason why I was bringing it up after Mark's presentation. They're not on Board Docs.
Okay. Just, go ahead and finish your thought.
I was gonna say, we have had discussions with some members of the public, very limited folks who have appeared before the Appearance Commission for design alternates about sort of the idea of Appearance Commission taking over that type of task. There was no objection mentioned by any of the people that we spoke with, but I preface that with, it was a very limited, very limited pool of people. When we brought forth TC 2 and TC 6, TC 2 put everything in the Board of Adjustment. And at the time we did that, some folks in the development community had asked that we put it with the Planning Commission, partly because of the caseload of the Board of Adjustment and so forth. But we recommended sending them to the Board of Adjustment because that board was already trained up to do quasi-judicial hearings, and they could take them immediately. All they had to do was apply a different set of standards. And so that's why the BOA has it now, was it was the quickest way to get them in front of a board that was already trained for quasi-judicial decisions.
So I'd like to suggest at this time that I think we need time to see this in writing, and I would be in favor of holding it at the table in order for us to see these additional thoughts be captured in the proposal before us. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on that? I see Mr. Commissioner Mann and Commissioner Lampton. So let's start with Commissioner Mann.
Hey, I just had a quick comment. I'm a member of, well, my last term is this year on the Appearance Commission, and I'm serving on the Planning Commission. And I just had a quick comment about our feelings on the Appearance Commission is that the administrative alternates and the design alternates, we on the Appearance Commission are more than capable of handling it. And so my general feeling from the Appearance Commission is that we would like to keep these administrative alternates or to see more administrative alternates in the current capacity and also take on more design alternates as well. So I just wanted to make that comment. I tend to agree with these changes being on both the Appearance and the Planning Commission. So I just wanted to make note of that, that the Appearance Commission is more than capable of handling both design and administrative alternates at this point because, like we all said, the workload is just, is going away from the Appearance Commission, and we can handle it.
Thank you. It sounds like a good plan. I just would like time to read through a, you know, recasting of the text change before we go and make a decision like that. Mr. Bowers, did you want to go before Commissioner Lampton spoke?
Just a quick thing, just a reminder that this text change, you did actually get an extra couple of weeks. This has 45 days and not 30 on the time extension.
So we have time to continue to ponder this.
Yeah, sorry.
All right. Commissioner Lampton.
The only other thought that I had might be a little bit more abstract, but the quasi-judicial hearing process, that's something that the Appearance Commission is already capable of doing. It's something, and just to understand, you know, from the Planning Commission's standpoint, we've never done quasi-judicial processes. So I'm wondering, just as a general concept, if we allow this one in, does that, I mean, that might potentially open us up for others as well. I just wanted to ask that question about process, if we might have to handle other things in the future in that manner if we're accustomed to now or if we were to be.
Mr. Bowers or Mr. York, would you like to respond?
So obviously, the future is unknown. I mean, the Planning Commission has clear authority to operate as a quasi-judicial review body. You have not done so heretofore. Once those duties are assigned to you and the board is trained up, there will certainly be the option of assigning additional types of review. What constitutes a quasi-judicial review is essentially the nature of the ordinance standards that are being applied. If they allow, if they're generally stated and allow for discretion, then that can be a quasi-judicial review. Right now, what's in the code that's generally stated, in addition to variances or things like special use permits, which are currently heard by the board, there would be an opportunity for future special use permits to have them heard by the Planning Commission instead. And then there's the items that were under discussion now, which are the design adjustments and administrative alternates, which also have more generally stated standards. So that, you know, it certainly opens the door, but there's no certainty as to what might come down the pike in the future. There was a time in the past when we had more discretionary review of general development plans. Were that to ever restart, it would have to be in a quasi-judicial setting.
And is there any encouragement that the city, is there any benefit to the Planning Commission having that process kind of open for us? I don't know if we want to, but I just wanted to ask that question because, again, this may trigger other things in the future. I just wanted to ask.
Well, that's obvious, there's, any answer to that question will be a certain, will contain a certain element of opinion, but it does provide flexibility that would not be available absent it.
Although the capability could be developed over time. But, and I just wanted to comment too, that we were struggling to determine how we would take on the quasi-judicial time that we needed in order to process those cases. So this could also solve that problem because we were discussing ending the regular Planning Commission meeting and then starting a quasi-judicial Planning Committee meeting. And so we were trying to even find out how we could work that into all of our schedules. So I think it's worth considering, and I would like the additional time to push this on, you know, leave it on the table, push it another two weeks, maybe four, because it sounds like next, in two weeks, we're gonna have a very heavy caseload. But I would like to see the additional suggestions in the text change. I think in general, I hear people saying that this is not, you know, this sounds like a good idea, so why don't we go ahead and add it in and see what it looks like? So Commissioner Miller, I noticed you had your hand up. Please, go ahead.
Yes, just one follow-up question for Mr. Bowers. You mentioned that initially you had considered making this function within the Appearance Commission, but you thought there were some reasons that you initially decided not to. And now that you changed your mind about that, what were some of your concerns initially?
Um, no, I think that that's not quite what I stated. What I stated was when this was first being discussed, I did not have an understanding that the Appearance Commission would have the authority to function as a quasi-judicial review body. Once that was clarified by looking broader, more broadly at the statute, you know, then the main concern was, is the Appearance Commission constituted properly to hold these hearings? And based on further looking at, you know, examining how they were conducting their meetings currently and the composition of the board and the expertise on the board, the answer to that question was yes. And so, but I think the initial reservation, at least on my part, was just not understanding that that was even a possibility that they could do it.
So I would like to propose that we table this for not the next meeting, but the meeting after, which would be, I think, the 12th of June, if I'm correct. And let me finish my thought, and then I'll, I see two hands up. And that prior, well prior to seeing it at that meeting, that we get the opportunity to see the proposed changes, send it out an email so that we can comment on it individually, an email so that there's an opportunity to process it before we get in there with these additional changes and also give us some time to consume this thought. Okay, so I'll start with Mr. York and then we'll go to Commissioner Tom. Mr. York?
Yes, if, if we could, before you move on, if you could let us know, let staff know what other comments you have, if any, on TC 17, then we can, the goal would be to cover this comprehensively so that the next draft that you see addresses all your concerns so that when we do take it back up, hopefully it will be a quicker, easier discussion.
Sure. Commissioner Tom Sula, you had a thought?
Yes, just, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on what we're actually expecting or what text we're expecting to come back. I mean, it sounds like aside from the kind of coordinates or the Christmas Plan, we're talking about no real changes to process or order. It's really just the location or the ownership body of this. That's really the only change, Mr. York, that you're proposing, correct?
Correct. We have some languages clarifying to make, make the language in the code read better, and that was what I cited to you specifically. And then the other change is wherever in the text amendment it now says, mentions the Planning Commission, instead of just saying the Planning Commission, it would say Planning Commission or Appearance Commission performing the quasi-judicial duties of the Planning Commission as designated by the City Council. That's the phrase that we're proposing being added after the term Planning Commission, wherever it appears in TC 17. So that's what you'll see in a new draft. Instead of it just saying, for example, "Design adjustments heard by the Planning Commission", it would say, "Design adjustments heard by the Planning Commission or Appearance Commission performing the quasi-judicial duties of the Planning Commission as designated by the City Council shall be approved when the applicant can prove the showings identified in Section 10 to 18 in an evidentiary hearing." So. So, we're not talking about changing anything substantively outside of which body reviews these cases. And it would still be a possibility of the Appearance Commission, under the draft, that we would present in front of you.
With the exception of you're asking, yeah, with the exception of you're asking for any other feedback, we have it this time, right?
Right, right. Any other feedback, we'd love to go ahead and be able to address, so that when you take this up again in two or four weeks, I, I didn't follow where you were on that, but when you take it up again, it could be a faster, more productive discussion.
Got you. So, go ahead, Mr. Tom Sula.
So, the reason I ask that is, is because, I guess I just, I'm not sure what, what is going to be too different, aside from some coordinates and that phrase, when we review this again. That, that was my only, you know, question, that if it's administrative, as to where the possible ownership lies. It sounds like that staff is comfortable with that, and the Appearance Commission is comfortable with that. That's where applicants have been going for the last number of years. And I guess I just, I don't know, I just didn't know what is, what there is going to be to review for, for the delay. That was really the only question.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the time it's going to take, considering we have a very large text change coming in next time, and we have this significant pressure to get some zoning cases through. So, I understand what you're saying, it should be expedient, but I am concerned about yet another item on the agenda. Commissioner Hicks, I see your hand up.
Yes, excuse me, um, I just wanted to clarify, so it sounds like the dissolve, the alternates that were considered previously stated that state law wouldn't, would only allow the Board of Adjustment or City Council, in addition to the Planning Commission, to review these cases, but I guess that was clarified, so it could include the Appearance Commission. That's one question. And then also, I just wanted to say, after we review this a little bit more, it does seem like it could be a good place, that the Appearance Commission could be a good place to put these types of cases, and it sounds like they're able to take on the workload and would welcome it as well.
Uh, in response to the question, here's, it's two statutes, basically, that we're reading in, uh, reading in communion with one another. One is, it basically says that the only municipal bodies that are allowed or empowered to grant quasi-judicial approval, okay? The City Council, Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment, DHIC is handled somewhere else. I mean, I mean, excuse me, Historic Commission's handled somewhere else. But anyway, those are the three. But then there's another statute that says that the City Council can assign more than, you know, one or more commissions with the authority of the Planning Commission. So basically, what we're saying is, the Planning Commission would continue to operate the way they do, but if council saw fit to assign design adjustments or design alternates, as they would be called moving forward, to the Appearance Commission. When the Appearance Commission hears design alternates, they're performing the quasi-judicial functions of a Planning Commission.
So working in the halo of the Planning Commission, basically?
Right, right. The council basically would assign the quasi-judicial authority of the Planning Commission to the Appearance Commission, and that's how they would basically sit as a quasi-judicial Planning Commission. That's, that's how we get to what's being proposed here. Did that answer your question?
Are there any other questions for staff at this point? Any other discussion about how we dispose of this case today? All right, so, I saw Commissioner Tom Sula's hand first, so go ahead, and then I'll, and then we'll go to Commissioner Lampton.
Um, I guess, this is just, I guess, a bookend to what I said before, but I guess I'm, I'm still just wondering, with us having the workload that we have, and the seemingly simple addition or amendment that Mr. York's proposing, I, I guess I'm just curious why we don't think it's okay to move this out today. And just curious if other people would feel comfortable moving it, moving it, moving it out today.
So you've asked the question. Commissioner Lampton? You're muted, you're muted. Sorry.
Uh, I'm actually kind of starting to feel a similar way, so I think it would just show up in the vote if we, you know, if the individuals did not want to move it forward, or did want to move it forward, whatever that case may be. You know, I, I, it seems like it's been well thought out by a lot of different groups. I'll just propose that thought.
Okay, Commissioner McIntosh, I saw your hand.
Oh, I'd be comfortable moving it out today.
All right, is there anybody who wants to hold it at the table? Okay.
Just, just to clarify, we would just be providing, the text change would allow the City Council to make the final decision about whether it's held at the planning, the, the quasi-judicial function occurs at the Planning Commission or at the Appearance Commission?
That's how the proposed amendment would read, yes. It leaves the decision with City Council.
Commissioner Hicks, you had a?
I have the same question, thank you.
Basically, what that would do is, say for some reason, the caseload of the Appearance Commission started to get considerably larger, and the caseload of the Planning Commission, zoning cases dried up. Without going through a text change, City Council could then assign, you know, share the workload, so that, one, they're addressing the public needs in an efficient manner, and two, they're keeping their boards and commissions busy, if that makes sense. That was why we are suggesting the language that I read to you, as opposed to just substituting Appearance Commission where it says Planning Commission.
Commissioner Lampton?
I, I do appreciate that flexibility for the city, so thank you for that clarification.
All right, so, it sounds to me like there is a will to move this forward today, and go ahead and add the language as part of the, the move, the motion. So, is that what I, is there anybody that objects to moving forward with that? Okay, well then I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Tom Sula?
Um, so, I might need Mr. York to help me properly phrase this, but, um, I move to approve TC 1719 with two recommended text amendments. One is updating the language to describe the coordinates of the Christmas Plan, as proposed or mentioned today in the meeting, as well as adding the phrase to allow for the Appearance Commission to also carry the design alternate load in addition to Planning Commission, as mentioned here as well.
That sufficient?
Yeah, if, if, since this is a, technically a rezoning, if you would add into it that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, that would, that would be helpful.
Okay, building on the fact that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and in the public interest to better serve applicants and staff with projects.
Commissioner Lampton, are you making the second?
Yes, second, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, and raise your hand. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, this motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to the next, to new business, to case number CP 818, a request to amend the comp plan in the area of New Bern Avenue and North Rogers Lane. And Mr. Aganost is, I have never gotten that name correctly pronounced, so if you want to pronounce it when you come forward, please do. We're ready for your presentation. Aganost.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great, yes, it's Aganost.
Aganost, thank you.
Good morning. This is, this item is Comprehensive Plan Amendment CP-8-18, entitled Rogers Farm. It's actually a collection of Comprehensive Plan Amendment requests that involve the future land use map, the street plan map, and the planned interchanges and grade separations map. And your deadline for making a recommendation is August the 10th. And so, the next slide is going to show the area that is the subject of these requests. It's, as you mentioned, the intersection of New Bern Avenue and North Rogers Lane, on the north side of New Bern Avenue. It's approximately 60 acres with regard to the future land use map amendment, and then involves a couple of street plan amendments. And you might remember, the zoning case you recently saw on the south side of New Bern Avenue at North Rogers Lane, that was related to the manufactured housing development there. And you also note that the Neuse River is on the east side of this, and then farther to the west is I-440, and east of the Neuse River is basically where Knightdale's jurisdiction begins. And I'll talk a little bit more about the character of the area in just a moment, but if we move to the next slide, we can see the request itself. And so, the image at the top, you can see the area in question for the future land use map amendment petition. And so, it is that yellow area surrounded by the dotted line. And so, it's, it's basically the, this portion of Rogers Farm PD zoning district, with the exception of an existing Aldi supermarket that's not part of the request, is fronting on New Bern Avenue. And so, you can see in the lower image, the requested designation of community mixed use, and that recommends retail, office, residential, some heavy commercial or light industrial uses, and any of those things in combination in a mixed use development. And the next slide will show us a little closer view, and I think this is helpful in seeing the existing townhouse development to the north of this site. And so, you can see that several of those townhouse unit and underlying parcels are quite close to the boundary of the request. In some cases, the, the wall of the townhouse unit is as little as 30 to 40 feet from the boundary of this request. A next slide will see the larger area, and so this is east of I-440 on New Bern Avenue. And so, New Bern in this area is characterized by large-scale retail, light industrial, like wholesale distributors, and, and car repair shops, hotels, so basically a diverse range of commercial uses that front right on New Bern Avenue, and then to the north at least, transitioning pretty quickly to lower density or moderate density residential. And then east of here in Knightdale, just on the other side of 540, is a target anchored shopping center, which also has a, a range of commercial uses. So this area is pretty well-served for retail and light industrial. And the next slide will show us the zoning, which corresponds pretty closely. And this is useful to see the Rogers Farm PD zoning district, which applies to the subject property. And so this is one of the only remaining portions of the original PD that's not developed. Again, it's about 60 acres, that's the subject of this requested amendment. And the PD currently allows what is pretty much moderate density residential on the east side, closer to the Neuse River, and then on the west side of the site, it allows a mixed use, set of uses, including office and retail. And the other thing to note here is that significant portions of the original PD were either transferred to the city or recorded as, as open space, as part of the development of some of the residential portions. And so those are those large areas along the river that you're seeing. And so that's where most of the floodplain is in this area. The subject site itself basically has no floodplain present, so flood risk is not an issue here. So the next slide will go back to the request, just so you can see again the boundary, and this helps us get into the policy analysis, which is overall inconsistent with the comprehensive plan for this particular component of CP-8-18. And I'll show you individual policy analyses for each of the requests, but for the land use portion, inconsistent, the consistent policies relate to having a mix of uses that is wider in range than just residential, which is what the current future land use map designation would recommend, a moderate density residential. So increasing the ability to have mixed use development that can reduce vehicle miles traveled and allow people to make use of different modes of transportation. But the inconsistent policies have to do with the existing character along New Bern Avenue, which is very much a strip commercial pattern with a, a lot of large-scale retail and light industrial. And so, a site of this size being designated for community mixed use would enable more of that style of large-scale strip commercial, which is, is pretty well-served at this point in time. And so, policies that are not supporting this request would encourage there to be more of a mix of uses and less of a focus, or less of a encouragement of large-scale retail. And then also, to think about how that impacts urban design as well. So, should there be an attempt at some sort of transect here, or transition to the, the nearby residential development? And so I'll move to the street portion, because I think we're going to wait till the end for questions. So the next request is a set of amendments to the street plan map. And so, the image on the right at the top shows the existing street plan, and I'll show you another image in a moment that gives you a wider view. But the way that the street plan is currently envisioning the future of this area is that South Hall Road, which comes in from the north, would become the primary conduit through this area to the south, and that that is designated to be a four-lane avenue. And then, whereas currently North Rogers Lane becomes South Hall Road, in the future, the street plan suggests that North Rogers Lane be realigned to tee into South Hall Road and form an intersection, and be more of a secondary north-south conduit, and really be more of a, and a ramp system for the grade separation that's proposed for South Hall Road at New Bern Avenue. And so what this amendment is proposing is that basically South Hall and North Rogers be swapped, that North Rogers be the primary arterial, and that the street to the east be realigned to tee into North Rogers, as opposed to the reverse. And that that street have a main street designation, whereas North Rogers currently is designated to be a two-lane avenue. To the next slide, please? And then, we'll go to the next slide. And so, one other thing to point out about the, the larger area is that, as I mentioned, there is a grade separation proposed for the intersection of South Hall and New Bern, and so that means that that would only be a bridge that allows South Hall to pass over New Bern, it would not allow turning movements from one to the other. And so, in the future, if, if this is all implemented, what would happen is if you wanted to go north or south on South Hall, you would pass over that grade separation and not have to stop at a traffic signal, and if you wanted to turn onto New Bern, you would take North Rogers and come to a traffic signal at grade level that would allow you to make those turning movements. And so, the third amendment, which we'll talk about in a moment, is to remove that grade separation. And so, the next slide, please? And so you can see that North Rogers is currently built, or some amount of, the, the laneage is built, the streetscape is not built. And then, South Hall Road extension and the realignment for North Rogers Lane, as proposed in the street plan map, are both dedicated, so that property has been turned over to the city for future construction, and that was done as part of the subdivision. And that was done as part of the subdivision that created these parcels. And so, you know, if this request is approved, then there would have to be also some amount of right-of-way abandonment that would follow it. The other thing to note here is that, you can go back to the previous slide, please. Currently, you have a consistent four-lane avenue designation from South Hall that continues all the way through New Bern and south to, once you get south of this area, it then becomes Rogers Lane again, all the way down to South New Hope Road. And so if this amendment is approved, there will be some inconsistency in the designation. Basically, you'll have a four-lane designation that will come from South Hall through the, the current North Rogers Lane to New Bern. And then the designation will go to two-lane, and then it will switch back to four-lane there at the south end. So there, that is something that's manageable, but it's something that the city, if this is approved, the city will probably take a look at, seeing if that merits an additional amendment. And so can we advance two slides, please? One more, please. And, oh, I'm sorry, go back one. And so this portion of the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And that has to do with the fact that the applicant has provided a traffic study of the impacts of these changes. And it shows that the level of service at, at the year of the forecasted traffic volumes, which is 2045, that this area will function with an acceptable level of service. NCDOT has been informed of, of this request and has said that they will defer to the city in terms of what the city thinks is appropriate. And so considering that the level of service should be adequate, and there, there are policies that support this because it would enable use of this, this property for development more readily than the current designation. And then the, the inconsistent policy is that, of course, there will be a right-of-way abandonment. Next slide, please. The final portion of this is the grade separation. And so that's a pretty simple request. It is basically to not have a grade separation and in the future to allow both of this, the north-south streets in this area to have at-grade intersections. And whether those are full movement in terms of having signals that would allow left turns is something that would be left to site plan determination. We wouldn't have to make decisions like that as part of comprehensive plan. And so there, there are a range of options of, of how those interactions can be managed. The thing I will note here is that, I'm sure you're wondering why a grade separation was proposed in the first place if this is showing that level of service would be effective without it. And that is the, as you can see in this map, the 87 bypass there to the south of this area has, is open now. And so if you are out east, coming from the east, there's an area east between Knightdale and Wendell where you can get off 64 and get onto 87 bypass and avoid all of the commercial area in Knightdale and New Bern Avenue and get right to 440. And so that is diverting a lot of the traffic that was expected to come through this area. That's the next slide, please. So there's an illustration of, you know, a little bit closer view of what that would look like on a, on a comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. And so this is consistent with the comprehensive plan due to there being, with the current forecasted traffic volume, a grade separation being somewhat excessive amount of infrastructure. And so that's all I have, and I am happy to take questions.
Any questions for staff? And yeah, there we go. I can't, can't see people. All right, so the first person I saw was Commissioner Lampton.
Just a question. There's a, it looks like it might be a townhome community right there. And my guess is, is that when they completed their process, they were, it was asked of them that they have those streets be open-ended. Didn't know if there was any consideration or thought into connecting those. And if so, why it wasn't or why it was, yeah, what happened there?
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that. So unfortunately, the streets in that townhome neighborhood are private.
Sure.
That predates our current requirements for public streets. And so it's not likely, there, there, there may be some requirement in the code during a site plan that there would be a stub that would have to be connected to that neighborhood. Unfortunately, it would not be, you know, fully public access through that property. The other part of it is, I think, my interpretation of your question is, why is that not included in the street plan amendment? And the reason for that is a street plan map is meant to be for facilities, streets that are going to be serving a, a regional network or just the larger area network, and are going to have a pretty important role in the area. And so a street that would connect the proposed main street to those townhouse private streets does not rise to the level of importance to be included on the street plan map. It is possible that it could be required in, in some form as part of a site plan, but it's not something that we usually would put on the street plan.
My only thought is, again, that, that, that developer must have, my thought is, is that they were required to have those be open. I could be completely wrong, but it seems like that would be, you know, you know, somewhat inconsistent with what they were told to do versus, and then to connect a road around it, but not actually have it touch those, at least one of those entrance points. So just, I think that's something to consider.
Yeah, and the thing I'll note about that is you will have a chance to consider that in much more detail pretty soon because the applicant has also filed a zoning case that is a PD zoning with a master plan. And so when that is before you, you will have ample opportunity to explore all kinds of circulation connections.
Mr. Thomasulo, I saw you next.
Yeah, thank you. I guess it's, I was curious, I was actually going to ask who the applicant was. Like, it's hard for me to know where to look in the CPs to see who the applicant is.
The applicant is Onleaf Law Partners, and the direct representation is Worth Mills.
Okay. And I, I guess that was kind of my question is how are, it seems like we're starting to get more of these where we change a comprehensive plan ahead of a rezoning. And I feel like I somewhat have my blinders on to understand the context of this comprehensive plan change. I understand that they're doing it to try and make something consistent. And a lot of times, especially in larger flats, there are holdovers from previous developments that were, you know, that we use tools that don't even exist anymore or have significantly changed. And so I guess I'm just curious if there are ways that as we see more of these, that they can be a little bit, that we can be a little bit more forthright with, with it? And so that we can look at them cohesively? Because, you know, my immediate question is, what are they hoping to get out of this? What are the benefits of this? I mean, I can see at a high level what they are, but you know, it's, it's harder to analyze it without understanding any context for the hope and desire on the ground.
Yeah, I'd like to respond to that a little bit.
Yeah.
I think one of the concerns that, that we have on the staff's side of things is that if you do combine a request like this with particularly a master plan zoning request, that can be somewhat of a, a distraction in the sense that if the master plan is showing amenities that seem good, then that can make it seem like the comprehensive plan amendment is more reasonable or more beneficial than it might seem in the absence of those promised amenities. And the nature of these two different actions is that the comprehensive plan amendment may stay in perpetuity even if the zoning changes. And so it is, from a, just a general philosophical perspective, it is better to consider comprehensive plan amendments, to a certain extent, in a vacuum, in the absence of the, of the zoning that might follow it.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have other questions? Okay, Commissioner McIntosh.
And I apologize, this may be, is the applicant also going to present?
Yes.
So I guess the question I have for the city, I just wanted to clarify the reasons for planned grade separations outside the beltline. Is part of that to allow for greater pedestrian and bike access across town?
I, I don't think so. I think the nature of that grade separation was largely a traffic volume consideration.
Okay. In the presentations for the Capitol Boulevard plan, I had the impression that part of the grade separations was going to allow better connectivity for pedestrian and bike access, but that doesn't sound like that's what.
Capitol Boulevard is a special case. That is, you know, those are being planned in more detail to specifically serve pedestrians and bicycles better. I do, I believe we have a policy that a grade separation is required to have a, a separated bicycle facility. So certainly there, there would be some facility for bicycles. I, Jason Myers is here. I don't know if he wants to add any additional information about the thinking on that.
Yeah, can you, can everybody hear me? That's a good question, Commissioner McIntosh. And I would say that, that John is correct, that this was not planned to be beneficial to pedestrians necessarily. It was a function of moving traffic in ways that, that after 87 was, was built and connected have not borne out in actual traffic volumes. The other thing is that the design of this interchange or that overpass that was, was planned was to carry the north-south street up and over New Bern in a way that would not be especially pedestrian-friendly. And that the Capitol Boulevard plan that you're referencing is very intentionally trying to avoid doing that so that the pedestrian path is very direct and we're moving the, the through-vehicle volumes either up or down to get them out of the way. So, so I, I think that is something to consider, whether or not this request helps or hinders pedestrian accessibility. But it was certainly planned in, in the past with the, with an eye towards vehicle volume and making this a little bit more highway and interchange-like and not walkable.
Okay, and I, and I guess my reason for asking is, you know, as they're asking for, basically as described as a continuation, it would allow a continuation of the kind of strip malls that are already along New Bern. It feels like this could, you know, start, well, it'll start to feel a lot like Capitol Boulevard. So I'm wondering, you know, knowing that the city is looking to mitigate difficulty for pedestrian access across Capitol Boulevard, it seems like thinking about pedestrian and bike access across New Bern is also probably warranted.
Certainly.
I, I also am just kind of picking along the same lines as Commissioner Thomasulo that I think it, it would be helpful to see kind of like the overall presentation on how both these cases will fold in to each other. So I don't, I, I mean, I wonder if in the, in this presentation, I got your point that, you know, you don't want, you know, it, it looks, you know, very desirable, but I think overall these two go hand in hand. And so if the second one doesn't get approved or this one does, it, it doesn't seem very consistent for us to vote on it in this manner. But I, I don't know how we can fix that. I guess to, to further on that, I'd rather see the second half before I vote on this one. I don't know how others feel, but.
Ms. Fox.
Mr. Anagost, can you remind me again, the rezoning application that's coming in? What was the, what was the request?
Well, they, their application is not complete. The master plan review process, but generally their request, I would say it, it is a PD, so it's a custom district, but it's most similar to a commercial mixed-use zoning district. So it would allow residential, office, and retail uses for the entire extent of this 60-acre site. There is, there are square footage caps and unit caps that break the site into three different tracks. And so there is slightly less retail allowed at the eastern end, closer to the river. But generally, retail, office, or residential could be fairly uniformly distributed across the 60 acres.
Follow-up. Can, can you speak a little bit about how a PD is a little bit different than other zoning districts in its relationship to recommending amenities?
Sure. Plan Development Zoning District is a, a custom zoning district. So the code allows an applicant to request zoning standards that, that are less restrictive, more lenient than the zoning standard that would otherwise apply if they selected one of our existing zoning districts, like commercial mixed use. The expectation is that in return for the greater flexibility, the applicant will provide, well, it's a requirement that they provide a master plan that shows the layout of their site. The expectation is that that master plan is detailed enough to show how they are going to use their flexibility to provide a high-quality, integrated development that is, you know, serving a range of users and, and creating the types of urban spaces that, that really make a place special and inviting.
So if you needed to change your master plan during design or during your site plan approval process, what's the process for that? Does it require, does that require rezoning at that point?
It depends on the scale of the modification. There are some minor modifications that are allowed through an administrative amendment. So that would be a staff review without a public component. If it is a large enough modification, it does have to be rezoned.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I do have a question. Where did this stand as far as neighborhood meetings? Were there, I realize it's a CP, but did it actually make it into any CAC meetings before they were?
It did.
It did.
So they went to, I believe, three CAC meetings that I think at all three of them, they presented the amendment and the zoning case at the same time. And the zoning case did receive a vote. They never requested a vote on the amendment. So, but the, the zoning case had a vote of two in favor and one against.
So they were not well-attended?
The earlier ones did have more people, probably in the range of 15 to 20 people. By the time they got to the vote, it was the very last meeting before the CACs ceased receiving city support. And so I think people had not realized, didn't participate for that reason.
I'm sorry, the last part, they didn't participate for what reason?
I guess potentially knowing that the CACs were not going to be supported for any longer.
Okay.
Maybe just decided not to go.
All right. So what was the tenor of the the audience at the 21st, or whether, whether you had 21 people?
Pretty ambivalent, I would say. I, I think a lot of people just see this as, as kind of more of the type of development that we're seeing in Raleigh. I think a lot of the people that attend the Northeast CAC don't live near here. They tend to be people who live closer to like Buffalo Road or, you know, northern, the more northern portions of the CAC area. So I don't think there was any, I, I'm not aware of anyone who stated that they would be directly impacted by this case at the CAC meeting.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else before we move on to the applicant? Commissioner McIntosh?
Oh, I was just going to, I, I'm a member of the Northeast, or I was a member of the Northeast CAC, and I agree with the assessment that most of the members probably are not from this area, this immediate area.
Okay, let's hear from the applicant. I understand that Worth Mills is here to present on behalf of the applicant, and he will have 10 minutes to speak, along with any of his supporters.
Yes, good morning, members of the planning.
Good morning, members of the Planning Commission. This is Worth Mills. Also on the line, on a separate line, is Reinal Stevenson with Rambie Kemp, who performed the TIA. And if there's any questions related to transportation, he's here to help with that. So as John mentioned, this is an amendment to three of the policy maps for the city of Raleigh. If you go to the next slide, please. Great. So first, we have a change of the future land use map for those 10 parcels from moderate-density residential to community-mixed use. We are modifying Raleigh Street Plan Map T1 in the following ways. We are designating North Rogers Lane as a four-lane avenue divided. We are removing the proposed realignment of North Rogers Lane that would tee up with the South Hall Road extension. And we are replacing the extension of South Hall Road with a modified Main Street parallel parking street type that would connect North Rogers Lane to New Bern Avenue. And lastly, we're modifying the Future Interchange Locations Map T5 by removing that proposed grade separation at New Bern Avenue as part of the South Hall Road placement. Next slide, please. So I'll start with the future land use map change. So first, conditions that warrant the amendment. We believe that designating these parcels as community-mixed use will be bringing consistency to the land use pattern that exists along New Bern Avenue today. Next slide, please. As we expand out and you see I-440 on the left side of the image and then our site on the right side of the image, we are the only group of parcels along New Bern Avenue, that front New Bern Avenue, that are designated as purely, or designated solely for residential uses. And a large majority of those, of that area, is designated for community-mixed use. I'll note that all of this area north of New Bern Avenue that's designated as community-mixed use borders low and moderate-density residential land areas. And so we wouldn't be deviating from any of the norms that exist along New Bern Avenue today. And I'll note that the use is allowed under the existing PD zoning from 1996 are just in themselves inconsistent with this moderate-density residential designation. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we may not have heard so much from members of the Northeast CAC, but we certainly heard from members of the Southeast CAC when we gave a complimentary presentation there, was a need for more quality retail spaces in this area. If you notice, along New Bern Avenue, a large majority of this land is designated for industrial uses. You still have the Wilders Grove Shopping Center west of here, north of New Bern Avenue, and you have a Walmart and you have an Aldi. But one thing that we have consistently heard from neighbors, especially just south of New Bern Avenue and those subdivisions, is a need for more quality retail than what they currently have. And so we believe that by changing the future land use map designation here, it's going to help facilitate not only our master plan, which is Z2419, is available online, but, you know, will also fulfill needs that this community has been asking for, for a while now. And so the amendment to the future land use maps, you know, facilitates those mix of retail office and residential uses that these neighbors have consistently told us that they want to see. The relevance to the six vision themes for the future land use map amendment for economic prosperity and equity, the future land use map, the change encourages the types of commercial uses that residents in this area have been requesting. It would expand the housing choices by encouraging a greater variety of housing types than those in moderate-density residential. It would manage our growth by bringing these parcels into consistency with others fronting along New Bern Avenue, a major thoroughfare that traditionally hasn't had a lot of residential uses fronting along it. We would be, again, coordinating land use and transportation by building this intensity along New Bern Avenue with six-lane avenue. And then by growing successful neighborhoods and communities, we will be encouraging that mixed-use community and not so much that strip development that New Bern Avenue has seen in the past. And I just want to touch on some of the concerns about intensity. Now, just to reiterate, a future land use map designation in itself doesn't change any of the uses that are currently allowed on the site today. We have submitted our master plan twice. We're about to submit a third time for staff review, and we hope to have that case finalized by staff and before Planning Commission this summer. But that master plan, like any conditional use rezoning, would have to show that it is mitigating factors as it relates to the residential uses adjacent to it. And we are doing that in our master plan. I've got a slide later on that'll kind of show the dispersion of different land uses that we anticipate. But even if our rezoning were to be withdrawn or denied, an applicant would still have to come back, go to the Planning Commission, go before the community, and show that they have the public's best interest in mind. Next slide, please. Moving on to the Street Plan Map amendments. This is a slide that shows the current Street Plan Map T1. You see South Hall Road as a four-lane avenue divided, running right past those existing townhomes to New Bern Avenue. And then you see North Rogers Lane, TN, to that extension, close to those townhomes as well. And as John was mentioning, you know, as far as conditions that warrant the amendment, when the North Rogers Lane-South Hall Road extension was proposed as a grade-separated intersection, that I-87 bypass didn't exist. And so the future 2045 projections for New Bern Avenue traffic are 39,600 vehicles a day, which is far less than the NC DOT's guideline of 55,000 vehicles per day minimum to justify that grade-separated overpass. And so if you think about, you know, what the eventual build-out here could be, if it's not a grade-separated overpass, NC DOT has told Reinal and Rambie Kemp that they wouldn't allow a full movement at grade intersection at South Hall Road in New Bern due to the proximity of the existing one with North Rogers Lane. And so what we've done in order to retain similar capacity, as far as the number of lanes that we have, is that we have asked to shift that intensity or that street size over to North Rogers Lane and then create a new connector street from North Rogers to New Bern that allows for more developable area. It moves the street away from the existing townhomes and should provide just an overall better transportation pattern for the type of mixed-use community that we anticipate here. If you can go to the next two slides, please.
So what's our time? I don't see our time count.
We're at a minute 15 seconds left.
All right. Thank you.
All right. So again, this is the layout that we anticipate. You see the connector street that replaces South Hall Road from North Rogers to New Bern. There are others, the extension of the street in front of Aldi and some additional access points along New Bern. And so we want to try and, you know, keep the retail away from the townhomes and make that a similar-style development. I don't want to get too much into the rezoning and would rather focus on the comp plan. But this kind of shows what we're anticipating from a layout perspective and how we feel that our future land use map and our street plan amendment are going to complement our master plan and be able to create a community that's more conducive to a mixed-use lifestyle than otherwise would be possible, given the current street layout. Seeing that my time's almost up, I'll end it there and free to answer any questions that Planning Commission may have. Thank you.
Okay. Before I'd open it up to everybody to ask questions, I do have a question about this map that we're seeing right now before the PowerPoints go away. So right at the corner where the new proposed road turns the corner, there's an attempt to connect into those two stubs at the townhome community. Has that been considered? Or what is the status?
So, so as John said, those streets that are owned, operated by a townhome, those are, those are private streets. And the area, you know, sort of southeast portion of the townhome development, if you were going to try and connect into that area, you run the risk of putting a street through or near a Neuse River stream buffer. And so one thing that we have done in our master plan is we have offered to make a pedestrian cross-access stub to those private streets so that if somebody wanted to walk or ride their bike over and visit some of the retail, they would have that ability than having to go out and get in their car and drive down North Rogers.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So I can't really see everybody right now because of the, okay, here we go. And so, any questions for the applicant? I don't see any. Oh, there we go. Commissioner Bennett.
I had a question about the same map that you were just looking at. Can we see that again, please? Was there any concern from a traffic perspective about the, all of these access points now along North Rogers?
So as far as the connector street that connects North Rogers to New Bern, NC DOT has told us that, as of right now, we should not expect a full movement intersection or at least the ability, you know, other than a right-in, right-out there. There, we are anticipating designing the street so that if the opportunity presents itself or conditions demand it, that the connector street could be expanded to include a third lane where you could then turn left onto New Bern Avenue if DOT were to permit it. I think right now, that's not looking like it will be feasible currently, but we would like to design it to that. We could accommodate future traffic if need be. The same goes for, well, we do anticipate perhaps a left end to the access road for the eastern portion. But NC DOT hasn't had any concerns about the number of access points that we're showing.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we go back to the view without the PowerPoint so I can see? All right. Commissioner Lampton.
I think this is just going to be a simple question. But so what's being proposed there are townhomes. So all of these streets are essentially private streets, correct?
The streets that we are showing in red would be public streets on that map that was just up.
The new proposed streets, not the streets in the townhome community. So the new proposed streets would be city streets and the townhome community streets that exist would be private streets, correct?
That's right. Those would remain private.
And I'm sorry, that last slide was extremely helpful. Can you put that back up again? Oh, I have it here. I'm sorry. Okay. I mean, I guess, yeah, I just want the city to kind of think about, you know, and I get that there are two different plans, and I'm sorry to get hung up on this concept of, you know, but I just don't know the intent of that townhome above that was approved, why they wouldn't get access then to a public street. And, you know, maybe, maybe they don't want it. But in the same instance, I mean, it looks like, you know, I don't know if it's like an exit route, you know, you know, if there was like a fire or something, like they can get out through that way. I just am not sure if that's taking everything into a holistic consideration for this area. It's probably a minor thing, but it's just something that's sticking with me.
Ms. Eric Lammon? This is Jason Myers in Transportation. I want to make, reiterate something John said earlier, that the street plan network does not, is not intended to show every street public or every connection to a public street. So this was a, the image you're all looking at right now is something that the applicant provided that I think is consistent with the current master plan supplemental, and it helped in communicate the intent of the street plan. But that doesn't, you know, adopting this comp plan amendment or something like this comp plan amendment doesn't say anything about whether there would be a point of connection to that. Neither would, you know, keeping it the same prevent or encourage that point of connection. It's really trying to lay out the base network from a relatively high elevation with a relatively low level of detail. And then, and then a master plan supplemental and later on, a site plan supplemental will increase the level of detail and specificity of that street design. So Planning Commission will get a chance to weigh in on the details of the street network when they review the master plan. And this is kind of the big-picture network that's being discussed, partly because the existing plan is not something that the applicant feels makes sense for this area. Whether or not it makes sense for this development, I think, is certainly a consideration, but it's not the only thing that they may be thinking about.
Okay. Fair enough. And I'll rephrase that. I just, if someone can look into what that applicant to the north had actually applied for, what was promised to them so that we can make sure that it's consistent. So I guess that would be a request if it's coming in with more detail later. So to summarize, what I'm hearing is that what we are approving today is just an overall general concept. That street could change a lot between now and our final. But we're just allowing the fact that there can be connections, and they may or may not look like these maps. Is that correct?
Jason, I don't know if you want to handle that question.
Yeah. I was gonna say, so what, the map with the red dotted lines is not, is not the amendment that's being requested. It is the changes to the avenues, part alignment and part designation and removal of the overpass that's being discussed. And the way that the street plan is interpreted through site plan review is that the general to-from of any network structure needs to be held consistent and that the cross-sections in the UDO apply based on what those street networks or street classifications are. But that then, of course, a PD can make some modifications to those as well, which I think we should expect in some of those. I think the PD section allows for mixed-use and local streets to be modified by a plan development district, but not major streets. So the four-lane divided cannot be modified, but Main Street parallel parking can be divided, two-lane avenue can be parked, modified, and so on.
Sorry, Commissioner Bennett.
The staff report mentioned some potential nuisance impacts to the townhouse community that's there. Were those envisioned to be coming from the changes to the street network or the change to mixed-use, a combination of the two? And could you talk a little bit more about what would be the adverse impacts to that community?
This is Worth Mills. I think from a street map perspective, what we are proposing is a lot less intrusive and less of a nuisance than what the street map currently shows. What the street map currently shows is South Hall Road as a four-lane avenue divided, which is a major thoroughfare, running basically parallel to the townhome development. is a major thoroughfare, running basically parallel to the townhome development, and then teeing in at New Bern Avenue. What we are proposing is a, is a lesser street, a, a mixed-use street, that, from a distance perspective, interferes much less with the townhomes than what is currently shown. From a future land use map perspective, in theory, you know, policies may recommend, you know, a mix of office and residential and commercial uses on that site, but that doesn't mean that we could automatically go in and, and build a shopping center right next to the townhomes as part of our master plan. That, that's going to have to be reviewed by staff, that's going to have to be reviewed by Planning Commission, City Council. And, and in our master plan, we have taken steps, not only through where we want to place certain types of uses and at what intensities, but also in some of our additional development standards. For example, we have a, a standard that says no non-residential uses shall be located within 100 feet of the townhome development. And on that, again, I don't want to get too far into the weeds on the, on the master plan, but we, we do show townhomes north of our connector street to try and blend our use with what the townhome use is. And so, the future land use map is a, is a big picture kind of recommendation, but from a detailed perspective, you know, we still have to tailor our master plan so that we get community buy-in, staff buy-in, and, you know, legislative buy-in. So, you know, we're still working with staff to do that, but we feel confident that, you know, we're getting closer to a point where this case will be before Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rint Miller.
Thank you. Thank you for the detailed analysis and presentation. Just wanted to add that when we, in advance of seeing what that final master plan looks like, one of the reasons I'm in favor of this project is because it promotes the development of this type of mixed-use activity close to other local residences and things like that. So, I know that you mentioned the opportunity potentially for pedestrian access from the housing, the nearby housing, if not, if it's not a street access, depending on sort of what makes the most sense. And so, as you're working on that kind of thing, I would encourage that as well, because I think that that is one of the key reasons why this comprehensive plan amendment works.
Understood, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Fox, did you have a question?
Question for staff, if that's appropriate.
All right, yes, please, go ahead.
Two questions. One is for Mr. Bowers. My question is, is there a path by which we could consider reviewing both the comp plan amendments and the rezoning in concert?
Like to get concurrence from City Attorney's Office. City, you know, cannot, under state law, require a comp plan amendment as part of the review of a rezoning case. Now, they filed the comp plan amendment of their own volition, and essentially what you would be doing is holding a decision on it until such time as a zoning case was also before you, so you could consider them in tandem. That strikes me as potentially permissible. The only issue might be that depending on the timing of when the zoning case would appear before you, whether you would need time extensions in order to continue to hold it under the comprehensive plan amendment. I hope that answers your question.
I would agree with what Ken said. I think if, if that's what you're wanting to do, I would ask if the applicant was agreeable to that, and let that go into your consideration.
So, this is Worth. We have kind of been following staff's lead and recommendations on the timing of the comprehensive plan amendment as it relates to the master plan. I don't think that we have much of a, a real preference either way. I, I think the analysis itself is going to be the same for Planning Commission and City Council. But, you know, we're happy to, you know, follow the lead of, of staff or Planning Commission, City Council, what, really whatever, you know, process makes the most sense for them.
I have one question for the applicant.
Yes.
Was any consideration, you know, you're, you're proposing a mixed-use center here, variety of uses. And, in addition to this comp plan amendment that might address some of the questions that are coming out, would have been to include a mixed-use center designation and some street designations on the urban form map? Was that ever discussed?
We did not discuss including this within a urban form map. No, sir.
Thank you.
So, in the interest of time, because we're coming up to 11 o'clock, and we have only really, we haven't even dealt with our second case, and we have two more cases to try to process today. I'd like for us to try to include our thoughts here and, and any more discussion we have about this case, and, and try to wrap up so that we can move on to the other two cases. So, Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Lampton both have something they want to say, but let's try to keep it concise and, and get to the point that, and Commissioner McIntosh all have things they want to say, but let's try to keep it compact and, and decide what we're going to do with this case. So, I will start with Commissioner Miller, and then we'll go to Commissioner Lampton after that, and then to Ms. McIntosh. Okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to add to that end. Philosophically, I understand the difference between passing this versus the rezoning case that will come after this. And while it would be nice to see the big picture down the road, I am comfortable personally moving forward with this comprehensive plan amendment, especially given the fact that the Planning Commission will have plenty of opportunity in the future to review the master plan and rezoning case, and tweak and make decisions at that time. But as a general matter, the, the questions being, the modifications being requested today, I believe those in and of themselves do make sense for that area, and I'm comfortable with the remaining control over the situation that we have with the future cases pending as well.
Commissioner Lampton.
I guess I could, I could see that point, too, because if we can do it on the other one, on the other case, that would be, that would be helpful. The other comment I, or question for staff I have is, because this is three different, essentially approvals packaged into one, do we have to approve everything, or can we approve, you know, individual ones and not approve others? It's more of a just policy question.
Mr. Bowers, would you like to?
Yeah. So, you could, you're making a recommendation to council. So, for example, if you wanted to recommend approval of the street map amendment and recommend not approving or denying the land use map amendment, you could make that, you know, the Planning Commission could make that recommendation. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner McIntosh.
I'm, I'm excited about the, the rezoning case that was spoken about, but I'm very concerned about just approving the land use proposal without also considering rezoning because of the history of development along New Bern. And I would like assurance that the rezoning map that we're shown that's not officially a part of this comprehensive plan amendment. I'd like assurance that actually is what's planned for development. And so, I, I appreciated Commissioner Fox's question about whether the two could be considered together, and I'd feel much more comfortable considering the two together.
So, let's come to conclusion. So, I, I hear a desire to move forward, and I hear a desire to hold the case and try to wait for the zoning case to catch up. So, what's your pleasure? Anyone have an additional opinion that they would like to express, or would someone like to make a motion?
Can I make a note? This is John Anagost.
Oh, yes.
Just on, on the question of, you know, keeping this with a zoning request, I think there is a third option that's not really been talked about, which is that the applicant may amend their petition to apply different future land use map designations within their site. And that, that would give you more assurance of what the future uses would be without requiring you to fully review the zoning request.
All right. So, that is the third option that we would have to ask the applicant, that they would be willing to do. So, is Mr. Mills still available on the phone?
I'm here, yes.
Did you hear the proposed?
I did, so. I, I think it is something that we can look at as far as specific areas within the overall site that, you know, we may be able to change a future land use map designation. I don't feel comfortable committing to that right now.
So, would you be willing for us to table this case for two weeks and potentially hear you again in two weeks with you having the opportunity to have that conversation with staff?
Um, yes, I think that's fine. You know, in the meantime, we'll still be working on the master plan and making sure that that gets submitted for another round of review, so I don't think a two-week hiatus affects us in any way.
All right, so Commissioners, would that be fine with you? Is there anybody who objects to us tabling it for two weeks to consider the other option? Okay, so we don't need a vote for that since the applicant agrees, and we'll move on to the next new business case, which is case number Z6. Thank you, Mr. Mills, by the way, for doing that. Moving on to case number Z620, a request to rezon property near South Saunders Street and Carolina Pines Avenue. And I understand that Mr. York is going to have to step away from the microphone and bring on someone, Catherine.
Yes, that's correct. I have a conflict with this since I represented the applicant before retiring from private practice, so now I introduce Catherine Auger.
Thank you. Hi, how's it going?
Good, how are you doing?
You all again, good, good, good.
Good to hear your voice. So, I understand that Hannah Recal, Recal, will be presenting on behalf of the city staff for this case.
Good morning.
Recal, we're ready for you if you are, and I hope I didn't slaughter your name.
Oh, you did, you did great. So, this is the rezoning request Z620. And the site is 2,604 South Saunders Street. Approximately 1.4 acres are requested to be renowned from commercial mixed-use, three-story parking limited to commercial mixed-use, three-story conditional use. The deadline for Planning Commission action is August 10. See, the surrounding zoning on the site along South Saunders Street is largely commercial mixed-use. Many of the properties have parking limited frontage. And then, to the east and to the west of this corridor are some residential districts, including R4 and R10. So, for context, this is south of downtown, just south of the interchange of Route 70 and I-440. The site is at the intersection of Carolina Pines Avenue and South Saunders Street. Both South Saunders and Wilmington Street to the east are largely commercial corridors, including a number of gas stations along this portion of South Saunders and other auto-oriented uses. And then there are pockets of lower-density residential nearby. As you may be able to see on the aerial, the site does not directly plot those residential areas. So, here are a few views of the site from South Saunders Street. So, it is two parcels, currently contains a restaurant on the corner and a gas station on the southern parcel. The request is for a conditional use district, and there are four proposed conditions. They include specifying that an amenity area would be located on the Carolina Pines frontage, and will have capacity for at least 15 seats. That the principal building would be clad in brick, with blank walls. That vending and ice machines would be located away from the corner on the south-facing wall. And the last condition comes to the location of a gas station canopy, it would be, you know, more than 100 feet from South Saunders Street, and make up no less than 50% of that right-of-way. So, the change between the existing and proposed zoning, this request is the removal of the parking limited frontage and the addition of those four conditions. The base district and the height limit are, would stay the same, so the change is really in relation of the building to the street more than the overall potential development intensity. So, for example, the build to, or a principal building under the current zoning would be maximum of 100 feet. And for the proposed district, there would be no maximum build to for the building facade. And just for more context, here are some of the features of the parking limited frontage beyond the build to for primary and side streets. There are parking standards for limiting parking between the building and the street, limited to two bays with one drive aisle. There are also pedestrian access standards. The UDO generally requires pedestrian access be established to the state. The parking limited frontage adds that at least one primary street-facing entrance for building is established, and that the direct access from the public sidewalk be established to that entrance. So, the rezoning site is designated as community mixed-use on the future land use map, and the requested CX district is consistent with that designation. The site has a partial overlap with a work-train area on the urban floor map. This would recommend a frontage, either hybrid or urban, a way to ensure pedestrian-friendly urban form. This request removes the hybrid frontage, and does, the request doesn't include either a frontage or conditions that speak to that recommendation. So, for that reason, the requested district is inconsistent with the urban format. So, overall, the request is consistent with the 2030 comprehensive plan, including the future land use map. As I mentioned, it is inconsistent with the urban format. This includes consistency with a majority of policies. Those include those that regarding compatibility with the surrounding area and policies engorging design quality in gateway areas. And the request was inconsistent with one policy, pedestrian-friendly development, and this is pointing again to the removal of the parking limited frontage, which offered those additional pedestrian access requirements and limitations on street-facing parking. So, there are no outstanding issues. The deadline for action is August 10, and I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions for staff? Waiting for all the boxes to fill in, okay. All right, Commissioner McIntosh.
Oh, so I was just wondering if there's any conditional uses that might be added to mitigate the loss of the pedestrian connectivity that would've been provided with the parking limited frontage?
Yeah, it is certainly possible for conditions to mimic the requirements of parking limited frontage. Should, should the applicant be interested in offering that?
I guess it's a question I'll ask the applicant.
All right, Commissioner Lampton.
Just to be clear, that sidewalk that runs along, that will be maintained, that'll be kept, correct?
Yes, I believe that there are requirements for sidewalks to be, meet UDO requirements generally.
So, how exactly will pedestrian access be more limited if there's a sidewalk there? So how exactly will pedestrian access be more limited if there's a sidewalk there and under this new zoning?
So the, my understanding of the general requirements for pedestrian access, site access, are that it be established under parking limited frontage. It's more specific that that access from the sidewalk to the site is to the entrance that needs to be established on the primary street. Whereas under, without a frontage, it could, you had a different entrance, not facing that primary street.
So is there a sidewalk on the other street? This is a corner, right?
I don't think there is currently. This is Jason Myers. I can answer that question. There is no sidewalk on Carolina Pines frontage of this parcel currently. There is a CIP project that would construct that sidewalk in design right now, and that would also, constructing that sidewalk would also be a site plan requirement of any development of this site that required ASR administrative site review supplemental, regardless of this zoning case, either with the rezoning or if it stayed in the existing zoning.
So either way, we're going to get a sidewalk on that secondary street?
Yes, and I'm not intimately familiar with this section of the code, but I think what Ms. Recal was saying was that the parking limited frontage requires the pedestrian connection from the building to the public sidewalk to be in a particular location, and without that, they could put it anywhere. Is that correct, Hannah?
Yeah. Yeah.
So I'm just trying to understand how directly or how much impact it is to pedestrian access to the site.
So if I understand correctly, if it were parking limited frontage, the building front door would have a sidewalk connecting to the primary street, which I would presume to be South Saunders, and there would be a direct connection between those two sidewalks. Absent the parking limited or a condition that did the same thing, that connection might go to Carolina Pines, in which case it would then, if you were going to South Saunders, you may have to kind of wrap around the block or walk through the parking lot to take a more direct approach. I think that's the issue at play here.
So there's some impediment, but not an overwhelming impediment?
Yeah. In terms of the public sidewalk infrastructure, I don't think there's an impact here in terms of how the site addresses the public street sidewalk. There is a bit of a change.
Gotcha.
And the other aspect of the pedestrian-friendly features of parking limited are the limitations on parking between the street and the building. So parking limited would limit that to just two bays. Without that frontage, they can put more than that between the building. That pedestrian path might go through that larger parking field.
Okay, thank you.
Right. So, you know, just to elaborate on this, there are some generic pedestrian access requirements in Chapter Eight that apply to all site plans, but parking limited, as stated, would do two things. Building couldn't be more than a hundred feet away from the primary street, and you would have to have an entrance facing the primary street with a direct connection to it. So depth of the site, I think, maximum is somewhere around 220 feet. So clearly, there's room to put a building more than a hundred feet off the primary street. And then if you were to have the pedestrian entrance oriented in a different direction, that could add some additional length. Given the size of the site, it's not as huge as an impact as it could be on others. So you ought to judge whether or not that's an impact that you feel is, needs to be addressed in any sort of conditions.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, let's move on to hearing from the applicant. Hayes Finley is going to speak on behalf of the applicant, and as a reminder, you have 10 minutes to speak. Is Mr. Finley on the phone?
Yes, this is Hayes Finley.
Okay. So, sorry, who's Finley?
I get that a lot. That's okay.
Sure.
So, yeah, so good morning, commissioners. My name is Hayes Finley. I'm here presenting on behalf of Speedway. And Kimberly Sturnad, our project manager for this site, had some technical difficulties. She was attempting to call in, but she's been unable to get through. So apologies for that, but just first want to thank you all for continuing to have virtual meetings and move business along as best you can. It's difficult for everyone, but we certainly appreciate the opportunity to move our project along. So, that being said, Hannah did a great job presenting. The project is consistent with the comp plan and the future land use map. So I just, we disagree on the urban form plan consistency statement, and I'll touch a little bit on that. But I also just want to start talking about why we are requesting this rezoning. So if we can move forward a couple slides, just stop there. That's great. So this is the current conditions of the site. There is currently a chicken and seafood restaurant on the corner, and the, there is a Speedway store and gas station there on the bottom right-hand corner. And that currently has two side entrances, one facing Carolina Pines Avenue and one on the opposite side. So there's not currently a primary-facing entrance. As you can see, there's a lot of pavement, a lot of dead space in the back. And so our plan is to redevelop these two sites into one modern, updated Speedway location. So that involves removing the chicken and seafood restaurant, putting a canopy in the front facing along South Saunders Street, and moving the store from the fueling station separate, sort of a little bit further back and central on the property. And they, as our conditions included, an outdoor seating area above what's required in the UDO. And there will be landscaping per the UDO. We mentioned there would be sidewalks, and it's really going to just be a prettier site. There's going to be better circulation. It's going to be safer. And so if you go to the next slide, please. So this is the parking limited, as was explained. This currently prevents Speedway from setting the store further back on the parcel. And what we've proposed is to have the canopy sort of meet some of those requirements of being within the setback elements, but the canopy itself is not a building, so it doesn't technically meet these requirements. But currently, the parking limited designation prevents Speedway from making these modern updates and redeveloping the parcels as they would like. So next slide, please. This is an example of a canopy. This is a site that Speedway did in Alabama. And so you can see there's the store is set back a little bit further, and that long canopy is, would be along South Saunders Street. And next slide. This is, this is that same site with the store being separate from the fueling stations, and it's got that nice, pretty brick, which we propose as a condition. Speedway has done several of these projects across the country. They do really good work, and this is their next project. And at the neighborhood meeting, one of the, well, the only neighbor who attended the meeting expressed a desire for some improvement. They, the site is not, is not very nice as it stands, and they would really like to see, to see some of these nicer features. So it will be an improvement for the neighborhood. So next slide. So I just want to quickly address the urban form plan. This is the map showing that the transit will actually be, is actually planned for South Wilmington Street, and the corridor just narrowly touches the bottom corner of this parcel. And the next slide, we'll zoom in here. That little tiny corner there is about a hundred square feet, and that's actually planned to be designated right-of-way anyway. So none of the actual development, redevelopment is going to be in that corridor. So for that reason, we disagree that it's inconsistent with the urban form plan. However, the current plans that Speedway has do include a South Saunders-facing entrance to the store, and it does include a pedestrian access to Carolina Pines. And if those are things that the commission would like to see as a condition, we are happy to offer that. But again, I don't, I don't know that it's necessary because there will be sidewalks and the outdoor amenity area. It makes sense for Speedway to have pedestrian access. So we will leave that up to the commission. But ultimately, this is going to be an improvement for the area, increase the functionality, the aesthetics, and we request that we recommend approval. So thank you. If there are any questions, I can answer them. And again, I apologize that Kimberly is not able to speak for Speedway.
We actually have Kimberly on the line, and Ray can add her on the call.
Right. And she has 2 minutes and 37 seconds, but she has 2 minutes to speak.
I just wanted to say thank you guys for having the meeting and for having our item on the agenda and continuing, like Hayes said, to conduct these with the whole coronavirus going on. But if you guys have any questions, please feel free to let me know, and I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant or either speaker? Please raise your hand if you have something you want to ask or say. Right. Okay.
I just, it sounds like this is a good project. I'll just, yeah, thanks for putting this together for us today.
Anyone else? Commissioner Miller.
I'll agree with that. I used to live in this area and use this gas station frequently, and I think this will be a great addition to the area and improvement to the existing site.
All right. Are we ready? It seems like there's not a lot of conversation that we need to have about this particular case. Are we ready to make a motion? And if so, who would like to put it forward? Commissioner Miller.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning case Z six twenty from CX three PL to CX three CU and modify the urban form map to comply with the case. The case is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use map, and it's reasonable and in the public interest because it facilitates reinvestment with the existing use and it's compatible with the property and the surrounding area.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Commissioner Lampton. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye and raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, raise your hand. Say no. Okay, this motion passes unanimously. On. I hear some background. Is someone trying to tell us something?
I'm going to switch back out. Let David come back in.
Sure.
Nice to see you all.
Good to see you. So we are moving on to case number Z twelve twenty, and Mr. Mabel will be presenting on behalf of the city for that.
Yes. Good afternoon. Bye, Catherine. This is a request for just under two acres. It is four parcels on Prince Drive, currently zoned R one. And you can see it's in the Swift Creek watershed, so all those little water drops are the watershed protection overlay district. And the request is for R six with the same overlay district. And it's a general use case, so there are no conditions. Your deadline is in August. The bulk of the zoning around here is residential. You can see there's the little, the little bit of CX three zoning adjacent, and then all of the white is either Town of Cary or Wake County zoning. So there's a fairly pulled-back aerial view to orient you. There's I four forty and forty interchange to the north there, Lake Johnson to the northeast. You can see towards the bottom third of the screen is the site. So Cary is on the western part of the screen and the bit of Wake County. So the rest of the area here is Raleigh, either City Limits or ETJ. So a bit closer zoom in to show some context. There's a reasonable mix of residential and commercial. You can see the detached and townhome subdivisions just to the east, and then some commercial directly on Tryon and Jones Franklin, and some further on Tryon and Walnut. So those residential, where it says detached and townhouse are currently zoned R six. The site is in the Swift Creek Land Management Plan. This is a plan that was adopted in the eighties by all five participating jurisdictions. You can see there, so besides Raleigh, Apex, Cary, Garner, and the county, and also the State Department of Environmental Quality. So our jurisdiction, either City Limits or ETJ, are the gray portion of the map, sort of in the top center there. So the next slide, we'll zoom in to how we regulate that. The land management plan has a couple of different land use categories that are defined here. So this is just the gray portion of the entire watershed that we control. And so the next slide shows where the site is. It's the furthest western end in what's called the new urban designation. So Tryon Road is really a dividing line between the more urban stuff up north of Tryon and just south of Tryon, and it gets, the recommendations are more rural, going further south towards the two water supply lakes. Some photos of nearby, not of the site, which is currently just trees, undeveloped. You can see some of the development on nearby, that number two. Second picture is the Udis Temple. It's across the street from the site. And then the third is a sort of an example picture of what the rest of Prince Drive currently looks like. So current entitlement, technically, if this were all one piece of land, there would only be enough acreage under R one zoning for one dwelling unit, because we round down. So to get two dwelling units out of the site, you would need a full two acres. But because it's already subdivided into three lots that front on a public street, each of those lots can support a unit. So currently, entitled for three houses, and the request for R six, again rounding down, would permit 10. And just to note there, the setbacks, the front setbacks do decrease from 20 feet to The watershed protection district, generally, the bulk of that regulation is about stormwater control and impervious surface, and amount of impervious surface and treatment of stormwater and that type of stuff. There is a requirement of stormwater and that type of stuff. There is a requirement for, for station of the site, of sites, um, in the overlay. So specifically for sites that are the new urbans or that brown color from previously, um, twenty-five percent of the land has to be forested. So that's some combination of tree conservation, so protecting existing trees and planting. Um, you know, that can be met in all sorts of different configurations. An applicant could keep all of that as trees if they have it already, um, which seems probable in this case. Um, but it, it can be some portion TCA and some portion replanting. Um, so the, the site is consistent with the future land use map. That low density residential, um, is a corollary to that new urban. So they both, new urban says six units per acre, um, which is what our low, that low density residential designation says. Um, the request is consistent with that. We, yep. Um, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan overall. Um, so a handful of policies about, um, water protection, um, and the Swift Creek policies. So the, the presence of the overlay is doing the heavy lifting really, um, for the environmental side. Um, and there were no, no inconsistent policies. Um, and your deadline is in August. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions for staff? Looking for hands up. Anybody who has any questions for staff? All right. Then we'll move on to the applicant. And our applicant today is Kehaly Mahib, Mohammed. Um, so are you available on the phone? I'm sorry.
Uh, yes. Uh, good, uh, good morning, everybody. Uh, this is Mohammed Kehaly. Uh, we are the owner of that property. Uh, yes, uh, we are ready here. Uh, I don't, see, actually don't want to add anything here as other than the, uh, the zoning are consistent with the, with the zoning area there. And I'm, I'm ready for any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? We do have two people who are signed up to speak in opposition. So, um, we'll have questions for the applicant now and then we'll have, uh, the opposition speak next. So go ahead. Uh, let's see. Any questions for the applicant? I see none. All right. What's that? Oh, sorry. Commissioner Lampton.
Sorry about that. Um, I didn't know, this is for staff and, and the applicant, um, was, did we go through the five hundred foot notice and the thousand foot notice and were there any meetings, um, with the surrounding area?
Um, this case, so the, the five hundred foot, um, did occur. I think this, this particular case, um, the text change for the second neighborhood meeting was not in place at the time. Um, so there was just the single, the single neighborhood meeting. Um, and I believe according to the record, there was not very strong attendance. There may have been one person at that meeting. Um, and this was, uh, not, did not make it to a CAC, I believe.
We had four, we had four attendants actually in the first, uh, neighborhood meeting.
And can you say what the tenor of their concerns were at that meeting, if any?
Uh, their main concern was actually the traffic on that road.
And there's only been the one meeting where they, uh, the neighbors have had an opportunity to weigh in on their concerns?
Yes.
All right. Any more questions for the applicant or staff before we move on to folks who've come to speak in opposition? Okay. We would like to invite, uh, I think it was Royce Batts who would like to speak first.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, my name is, uh, Royce Batts and I live at twenty-five thirty-two Prince Drive. Um, and, uh, I think, uh, your, your commission members should have, uh, a letter that I sent through, uh, Mr. Mabel to you dated May eighth, and also a photo copy of the Z D R Prince Estates plot plan from nineteen sixty-nine, and also a copy of, uh, Mohammed's, uh, plot plan dated October fourth, twenty nineteen. Um, let me say this. Uh, my wife and I, uh, purchased, uh, a property on, in nineteen seventy-six, uh, lots twenty-one, twenty-two on the Z D R Prince subdivision. Uh, if you notice, see the Z D R Prince Estate plot plan there, you can see those areas.
Yes.
Uh, we built our residence in the center of the two lots in nineteen seventy-seven, and we chose, uh, the Prince subdivision because it consists of twenty-two one-half acre lots. Uh, at the time that we purchased our property there and built our home, um, that street was a gravel street. So a lot of things have changed. Uh, uh, there were a total of seven houses in that subdivision at, in nineteen seventy-six, and today there's currently eight houses and one Buddhist temple in the subdivision. And I think it's lot nine is also, uh, under, uh, uh, construction or in, under permitting to construct. I'm not for sure that, about that status on that particular lot. But, um, uh, Mr. Mohammed is with General Properties, is proposing to rezone one point eight acres from, from one R one to six R six to build seven homes. And you note that on, uh, on Mohammed's, uh, plot plan dated, uh, October fourth, twenty nineteen. Uh,
Mr. Batts.
His survey on his plot plan is showing that he's gonna build, uh, on lots, um, four, five, six, and seven. And that is approximately a two hundred foot lot deep.
Okay.
And he is wanting to, she's showing on his plot plan there that he's gonna build it on the east, uh, end of that lot, which is adjacent to Prince Drive.
Okay. Mr. Batts, your two minutes is up.
My ten minutes?
Two, two minutes. Your two minutes is up. You had two minutes to speak. Unless we grant you more time. Can you hear me?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm at the point where I'd like to make the comments on why I don't, I don't think we need to change the zoning.
Uh, do, does anyone want to vote to give Mr. Batts, uh, additional time? Ms. McIntosh, what would you like to propose as your motion?
I, I was just gonna say if, if we don't have other...
We have one other person and so there's the total of ten minutes time. So do you want?
At first time, it seems like it would be reasonable to let him finish his thought.
Do you want to grant him two more minutes?
Yes.
Okay. So would you make a motion to that effect, please?
Um, I move that we grant two more minutes to...
Okay. Well, thank, thank you very much.
Wait, wait, wait. We've got a vote. We've got a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have a second? So, uh, I'll take, uh, Ms. Bennett's second. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand. Aye. Okay. Mr. Batts, you have two more minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, one, one thing that I have a concern about is showing where he's gonna build, uh, building, uh, real close to Prince Drive. I think the setback on those houses, uh, that he's proposing should be the same setback as the other houses on Prince Drive. Um, and, um, the, it's, as, as you know, that is in a Swift Creek watershed. Uh, and, uh, so, uh, I'm concerned, are you gonna have to do, uh, a, a retention pond there on that property? Uh, and, oh, the additional traffic, the additional traffic is on that is, is a big concern to me and the other folks in our community. And as you know, the, if you look on lot five, uh, the DOT has a right of way to bring the traffic on, on Yates Mill Pond Road onto Prince Drive. And I think if he, if he built those men, those seven houses, it's gonna increase the, the number of traffic on Prince Drive. It's a small cut through street as it is, and that, that's a big concern to me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Batts. So, uh, we have, in addition to Mr. Batts, another speaker, and I'm trying to find my note. Um, paged up somehow. Shin Wu. Is Shin Wu on the phone?
You can hear me?
Yes, can hear you now. Do you have two minutes?
Okay. Yeah, I'm speaking on behalf of the temp, the Temple Cross Street. And when we purchased the pri, property to build the temple, we trying to find a location where we have less impact to the neighborhood. And this is a low density residential area and we, we decided to build a, the temple there. If we increase the density, then the, there will be more conflict between the activity we have in, in the temple and the high density neighborhood. So that's one of the reasons we against, uh, reselling to a higher density. And also, this is several years ago when Swift Creek watershed become a major issue because that's a alternative water supply for Raleigh. And if we increase the density, keep increasing like what we've been doing now, the watershed will not be able to protect it. And water supply in the future would be a major issue for the whole world. And Raleigh is no, you know, is no exception. So we against it because we would like to protect the watershed.
Thank you.
And the traffic is a major issue here because we have a lot of pedestrian traffic generate because the, uh, our activities. And increased traffic is going to causing accident to the pedestrian. And so we want to raise our objection on this. Okay, that's all I...
Thank you. Um, Mr. Wu, are you saying you're concerned about the conflict between temple activities and the higher density because of pedestrian, pedestrians on the road?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for, uh, these two, um, neighbors who have come to speak? And I'm getting back to the, any questions? Uh, Commissioner Miller?
Do we know, to that last, to Mr. Wu's last point, do we know, um, if there have been, do we have any incident reports for traffic safety or pedestrian safety at that intersection currently?
Um, this is Ira Mabel. I'll, if Jason's still on the line, he might answer. I don't remember the, the staff report, transportation analysis indicating any. But he might be able to look that up.
This is Jason. I don't know. Um, there wasn't anything in the staff report about that. I will double check right now in the next thirty seconds, um, the NC DOT, um, pedestrian and cyclist crash map, um, and be able to answer that question, um, when there's an opening.
Commissioner Lampton?
Um, I don't know, uh, what access the commissioners have, but I would recommend just doing a, um, one of the Google street views of twenty-five sixteen Prince Drive, um, just to kind of get a feel for what that walkability is. Um, it doesn't appear as though there is much. Um, I know that this will bring, you know, potentially ten units to that area, um, you know, uh, which I know we're, we're generally for, um, development. I'm, I have a little bit of concern that the full neighborhood wasn't, um, kind of brought in the five hundred and the thousand feet. And it, I just, I don't know if the applicant has been able to work through the concerns with the community hand in hand. I know that in general, the planning commission really appreciates developers that reach out to the community and, and work, you know, in, in tandem with what they're looking for. So, um, that's just some concerns that I have overall.
Uh, it's a good time for us to bring conversation back to the table since I think we've, we've kind of ended the questions. Um, so are there any other thoughts from folks on the commission? Anyone want to speak? Mr. Tomasula?
Um, I guess just some, this is more technical, but, um, I don't have the UDO in front of me, but I do believe that with the, with constraints for sites in R six, that the ten units wouldn't be possible. I'm assuming that whatever, what they're planning is the max possible number. Um, I might be wrong, but, but just, just, it's more of a technical certification.
Well, if you look at, at the, um, at the email attachment that, um, Mr. Batts was talking about, he shows a plat at the very end of what is being proposed, and there are ten units being proposed.
Correct.
Okay. So, anyway.
Okay.
All right. So, did anyone else want to say something? Uh, Commissioner Bennett?
So has the applicant done anything to address the concerns of the temple about conflicts with pedestrians? Has anything been done to enhance product, safety of pedestrians?
Mr. Mohammed, are you available? Or is it Mr. Kehaly?
Yes, I am available. Yes, yes.
Is it Mr. Kehaly?
Kehaly, yes. You got it right.
Okay.
Um, I totally understand, you know, the neighborhood, uh, you know, concerns about the traffic. And, uh, uh, yes, for actually, when we first thought about the project, we thought about, you know, we could put ten units. But going with the, uh, engineer, going with the fact that there's a stream on the land, an actual stream, that's actually will not allow us only to put only four units on these old lots. So these are only, there are three lots. So you can now, at the, at the current zoning, you can put three houses in it. And we asking only with two for four. So it's not gonna be a ten. That's, uh, and I did actually send the, the latest, uh, uh, the plan to Ira. I don't know if Ira can put it on the screen as well.
It would be good to see that if, um, Mr. Mabel has that.
Yeah.
Do you have that?
Yeah. That's, that is actually the actual stream in the land. And these are, you know, the, the last, this is what, what we can do or the, the plan to put only four houses. So...
So instead of three, you would have four because of the constraints of the, of the natural environment?
Correct.
Uh, and is, is this, this I recall as a, a general use case and not a conditional use case?
That's correct.
And as far as, uh, transportation, actually here, um, I got actually the recommendation, uh, from the staff here from Jason Meyer about the, uh, the daily activities. And this is, uh, you know, uh, probably add up to, I really cannot read that, but I have it here in the email, uh, how, from Mr. Jason Miller about the, uh, the traffic and how it's gonna affect the Prince Road and that with, with four houses there.
If this were a conditional use case, I would be, um, interested in having a condition that said that only four houses would be developed. So is there constraint enough in, uh, the UDO to just confirm that there will only ever be four houses there?
Yeah, we can, we can go that, that conditional. I mean, we, we agree with that. We're not gonna go more than that.
Um, so to Mr. Tomasula's earlier question, I mean, I, I do have the UDO in front of me. Um, and a, you know, there is additional constraint. So an R six lot, um, must be at least fifty feet in width on the interior. Um, so there's not room for more than six lots if, under a configuration, assuming that, you know, a straight up, um, division of pi wedges. Um, I'm not saying that there isn't some other way that the land could be used to get the full, um...
Six or ten.
Entitlement, right. The full ten based on the acreage. Um, I have, I have not found, so this, this plat is showing, um, some news river buffer for some portion of that stream.
Right.
Um, I, I can't say if that, I can't corroborate that. Um, I was looking at other, at other plats nearby. Um, I was looking at other, at other plats nearby, looking for other places that had news river buffer, and I couldn't find any. So it may be the case, um, and I know we have stormwater staff nearby, they may be able to help me out on that.
What's the process of converting this from a general use to a conditional use case with just a, a condition that says that only four houses would be developed?
So the applicant can do that. They can submit a new petition and pay the difference in the fee. Um, and it's, should be fairly straightforward, um, and not uncommon. And if, um, and at that point, then can, can offer any condition that might seem appropriate to them.
That would be my preference in this case, but, because I am concerned about, uh, it being in the news river, or I'm sorry, in the buffer area. And, uh, I am, uh, concerned about the neighbors' concerns about it being the kind of place that they, in particular, the temple is looking to, uh, try not to have any massing going on right near them because obviously they're probably performing some outdoor, um, activities. Um, so my preference would be to see this case become a conditional use case and, and, and have a condition of four units. Is there anybody else who has another thought about this? Commissioner Fox?
I would like to, um, some assessment by stormwater staff about technical parameters and what limitations currently exist with the UDO as adopted.
So we could probably get that by the next meeting since we're going to have to see this case back again if, if we don't vote on it today. Would that be acceptable? Since we're closing in on noon. Uh, Ms. Hicks?
I, yes, I, I would generally support this case, and I feel like if, um, we had additional, um, details in the, in the form of a conditional use, um, with some conditions, that it, it would be easier, much easier to support.
So, uh, not seeing a whole lot of comment, I'm going to try to wrap us up here. So, uh, Mr., I'm trying to make sure I say your name, Yali, uh, we would like to propose to, um, table or hold this case and allow you to go back to work with staff and look at, uh, moving this to a conditional, conditional use case, um, and addressing some of the concerns we have here. Would you be willing to do that?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So with that, we're going to table the case and we'll send it off, uh, to work through staff, and I assume they'll bring it back to us when they have, uh, gotten all the parts and pieces in place. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Kiyali, for considering that. All right. We're moving on, unless there's anything else that... All right. I'm looking for the minutes, the minutes, here we go. So, uh, we need to vote on the minutes for the April 28th, 2020 Virtual Planning Commission meeting. Uh, does anyone have any corrections they need for that, uh, meeting, for that, for the minutes for that meeting? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, Ms. Bennett?
Thank you. On page five, um, there's a sentence that starts, there was discussion regarding, and then it's not complete. So I'm not, not sure what that was saying.
Yes, I actually reviewed...
It's near the top of the page, the one...
Yes, I actually know what you're referring to. And I did, I just removed it because I had finished the statement prior to that, so I removed it yesterday, so I was going to mention that. I figured it would come up.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, would that, would that change?
Do we have any other comments on the minutes? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of the minutes.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, Ms. Miller, okay, yes, thank you. So, and all in favor, say aye. Aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Okay, moving on. Uh, so I think we're at the report of the chairperson now. Hang on, got to go back to the official agenda. The report from the chair. So, um, I'm going to yield my time to give, uh, Ms. Roberta Fox her introduction. She's new to our commission as the Wake County, um, representative. So, Ms. Fox, is there anything you'd like to share with us about how you came to us and, and what you might want to, want us to know?
Hi, thank you very much. Um, I think I know pretty much everybody. It's really nice to obviously see faces during this time. Um, I really appreciate it. Um, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Bert Fox. Um, I used to work for the city of Raleigh from 2009 to, um, February of 2019. I served there as one of the assistant planning directors, um, and also the principal urban designer for the city's urban design center. Um, I went back into private practice over this past year, um, and I work, uh, with the company Catalyst Design. Do you guys have any questions for me?
We just feel fortunate to have you. Thank you for joining.
Yes, great.
So, uh, are there any reports from the members? Now we'll go on to the report from the planning director.
Okay, an update on the, uh, city council meeting from last week. There were three items which were approved. CP 1119, which is the alteration of the West Morgan Street extension, Z 2319, Strickland Road rezoning, and Z 120 Ogallin Road. Um, Z 3919, North Rogers Lane was also acted upon. That, uh, application was denied, uh, consistent with the recommendation from the planning commission. Public hearing for CP 120, uh, Swift Creek watershed, um, area plan, that item was, uh, heard. The hearing was closed, it's been deferred to May 19th as a special item, and will be on the next council agenda. Five items were scheduled for public hearing on June 2nd. They include CP 1219, Kenley Street, Z 2819, Leadmine Road, Z 5419, Kelly Austin Drive, Z 3819, New Hope Road, and Z 520, New Burn Avenue. You heard about your time extensions earlier. Um, you have three pending text changes. The one you considered today had a 45 day time extension, and the two others, which had been pending in, in, uh, text change committee for accessory dwellings, and the parking height and cottage court changes were given 30 days time extension. Um, also zoning cases, Z 5019 on Method Road and Z 3119 on Needham Road were granted the requested 90 day extensions. There are dueling, uh, nominations for the commission. Uh, E.D. Jeffries has been renominated, but there's also a competing nomination of Brian O'Haver, um, who has, uh, been on the appearance commission among other activities. And then, uh, my only other update was the welcome Roberta Fox, who was appointed by the Board of County Commissioners to be the ATJ seat. So welcome aboard, Roberta. Good to see you again.
I, I had to find a way to make you talk to me again, so I thought this was...
So first you had to move to the ETJ?
Yes, yes.
All right. Okay, well, that's all I have. Thank you so much.
All right. So the pending items, we, uh, probably need to clean up, uh, to say that there will not be, uh, a strategic planning committee meeting. Um, I guess they're all TBD, so there's no, nothing there for committee of the whole. So there'll be no committee of the whole, there'll be no text change committee meeting this month. Um, and everything will roll into the regular planning commission meeting times for the foreseeable future. And I know that we have a long list of people trying to get in, um, to see us, and, um, I know that Travis and I will be looking at that list very shortly. So is there anything that anyone else wants to say before we adjourn? All right, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Bye, y'all.